We're ready to proceed. So, we are going to begin our meeting of the Committee of the Whole. And at this time, I ask Sheila to take a roll call of the members present at this time.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Furman.
Present.
Mr. Torres. Pastor Jones, Pastor Jones and Mr. Torres gave notice.
Okay.
Dr. Hans. Ms. Newman. Ms. Root. Ms. May.
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff.
Present.
Dr. Giles. She also gave me notice. Mr. Lansman.
Present. And just a note, John Paul reached out to me. He will be running late. It's his birthday. His wife and children are taking him to dinner.
And Mr. Cohen.
Present. Okay, so we have a quorum of the, of the Board, of the Committee this evening, and we also have a quorum of the Finance Committee. At this time, I need a motion for approval of our agenda.
Still moved?
Support, motion, support. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. And we have an agenda. So, now it moves over to the Finance Committee, and we have seven contracts and the budget to make recommendations on. So, we'll hopefully move through this.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
We're gonna just back up a second for a public comment.
You know what? I apologize.
It's okay.
We have an active agenda tonight, but we do have time for public comment. So, do we have anyone online? Is there anyone present in the audience that wish to make, make a public comment? There being no one, there'll be a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. So, that being said, we will go over to the Finance Committee portion of the meeting. And the first contract is the Rosati Law Firm Legal Contract, which is an extension presented by our General Counsel, or a member thereof of the team. You're all set.
Good evening, here.
Yeah, do you wanna just give us a brief overview?
Sure. Danar Haggins, Corporate Counsel for OCHN. The contract is for a extension for our legal services. This is a no-cost extension, and we're looking to extend it to September 30th of 2024, at which point, in the fiscal year for '24, we will put out an RFP for legal services.
Right, and this is a budgeted matter. So, is there any questions that anybody on the Finance Committee, or anybody on the Board has for the Legal Counsel Office? If there being none, I'll entertain a motion on this, for a recommendation on this matter.
Moved to, recommend it goes to the full Board next week.
Support?
A motion and support. Any discussion? There being none, a roll call vote, please.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Furman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We also have the fiscal year '24 CMHSP contract in the amount of $10.8 million, and that's also coming from our legal office.
Yes, so, this is for the Community Mental Health Service Program. That's the contract to manage and provide an array of mental health services and support for the individuals served. As you stated, it is a contract for around $10 million.
Okay. Is there any questions anyone has? Yes, Ms. Furman? Thank you. I saw that the amount was for $10, $10 million, $10.8 million, whatever, and I saw that the next one up is the PIHP contract for $435 million. Why is this one so much smaller if we're both a CMHSP and a PIHP?
I believe is that a question that either the CEO or finance could answer?
Better wait till you're on mic. Patrick, come on. I'm sure people are gonna wanna know this, and that's one reason why I'm asking.
He's asking me for the comparison of both contracts.
Right, why is one $10.8 million, and we have really a $4.00, well, a $435 million size contract that's on the overall PIHP?
Uh, the, thank you. Um, the CMHSP really does rec, oh, Kalana's there. Kalana, you wanna speak to that?
I'm gonna try.
Okay.
So, the $10.8 million is for our general fund dollars from the department. Our PIHP contract is separate from the CMHSP, which is our Medicaid contract. Our CMHSP is strictly general fund grant dollars.
So, say that again, was garbled. $10.8 is for what? Duals?
General fund.
General fund, thank you. Okay, yeah.
That's exactly what I want.
And that is the number. Is that the buyout? Is that the money we use for buydowns or paydowns?
No.
No, okay.
We could potentially, but no. General funds are just for those general costs associated with services and support, and they're not as earmarked as the Medicaid dollars.
Okay, thank you. Not, not truly unrestricted, but there are less restrictions.
Less restrictions.
Okay, thank you. And I did ask the question earlier today, and if you note, under state, on that is the exact same dollar amount. So, we're using this, this amount in the contract as our budget amount for the coming fiscal year. Any other questions? There being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Still moved?
Support, a motion and support. Any discussion, any further discussion? There being none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Furman.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The third contract that has, from our legal office, is the PIHP fiscal year '24 contract in the amount of, I can barely say it, $435 million and some change. And that's a substantial portion of our revenue, so, between these two contracts today, so, about 85 percent, I think. So, if you care to give us a little, little update on this?
So, it's for the prepaid inpatient health plan. A contract to manage and provide a comprehensive array of mental health services and substance abuse services and support individuals serviced. And as you said, it's in the tune of $435 million.
Is there any discussion? So, the only, I know we, and I apologize, I know there was a long discussion at the study meeting, but is this involve the Medicaid reimbursement?
This is Medicaid.
So, so we have some clarity now from the, from the state on rates and?
We do. We have some clarity on rates. We're still waiting, waiting for some of the finalization of those rates, but there was actually the day we presented, was that the Board Study Session Day? The actual day of that, we received the rates that very day, and we had to run and look at everything and make sure we were pointing dollars in the right places. But this makes up Medicaid service funds and also a number of different programs. And part of this Medicaid dollar is also a piece of CCBHC, so it's just a lot of the programs, or all of the programs that are supported by Medicaid and the services that we're required to provide, the full array of Medicaid services for behavioral health.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate that explanation. Is there any other discussion or questions? I don't want anybody to think we take $435 million lightly, but this was discussed at our study session a couple of weeks ago, and this has been for the last several months, a, almost at every board meeting, we've been talking about this with Medicaid, and so, finally, and eligibility and reimbursement rates and things like that, and now finally, after several months, we have some definition going into next year. So, I don't want anybody to think we just rubber stamp $435 million. This has been quite the discussion over the last several months. So, that being said, if there's no further discussion, we'll have a motion for a recommendation of approval.
Still moved?
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? There being none, a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Furman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your assistance this evening. All right, the next contract for our review and consideration is the Medaversent contract, which has to do with our, their accrediting, credentialing verification organization, and do provide services to us with respect to our accreditation. And we have Ms. Massey here this evening. Thank you very much for attending.
Good evening, Marquita Massey. I'm the Director of Quality and Regulatory Compliance. I'm here to request Board approval for our Medaversent contract. Medaversent is a credentialing verification organization. We initially contracted with Medaversent, starting in fiscal year '22. Fiscal year '23, renewed that contract, and we are again requesting to extend this contract again for fiscal year '24. Medaversent is an NCQA accredited organization, so what that means is that the files that are prepared by Medaversent are uniform, they're consistent, and when we had our NCQA review back in 2022, those files passed with flying colors. We had no problem. We didn't have any problems anyway, but we had to do a little more prep efforts to, to some of the files. So, we are still in the expansion phase of transitioning all of our providers for practitioners onto Medaversent. We have several providers already using Medaversent. We will eventually have all of our practitioner credentialing flow through Medaversent. This fiscal year, we did have a few technical snags with Medaversent. They were attempting to transition to a cloud-based system, and that caused some delays in processing of files, but things are improving, and we'd like to request renewal of this contract for fiscal year '24.
So, I'll just ask one quick question. Are you happy with the services they're providing?
I'm hap-
Maybe that is the right word, pleased?
Yeah, I would say pleased. We are pleased. As I said, they have a very good product, but they did have some snags this fiscal year that we've worked through with them.
Okay, corrected for this year?
Yes, and we're gonna have more stringent contract language in FY '24, so that if there are concerns, then we'll have a means to be able to adjust payments to them.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Lanigan? So, you're talking about SLA's service level performance with them?
SLA.
So, that we can, service level agreements, yes?
Yes, yes.
So, we can hit them with a stick if they don't have availability?
Yes.
Or get credits back or something?
Exactly, yes.
Awesome. Yes, Ms. Woodruff?
What percentage of providers still needs to go online?
Well, we have our ADA providers, we have our SUD providers, we have CNS, TTI, OSS, we're starting with Easter Seals and Mork. We, so I don't have a percentage.
Okay.
But that's where we are so far with bringing providers on board.
So, will all providers be on board at the end of this contract in 2024?
That's our plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? There being none, entertain a motion for a recommendation of approval for this $111,000 contract with Medaversent.
Still moved?
Support. Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? There being none, a roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Furman.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Marquita. Appreciate it. The next contract for consideration is the My Strength contract with Easter Seals.
The training.
Oh, I'm sorry, which one? Oh, the D, oh, switched it, okay. Oh, I checked it off already. My mistake.
I like your enthusiasm.
And I was very, and I was very, and I was very excited about this one for a reason I'll mention. Yes, the Mork Training, and Tricia, welcome. I apologize for, I did not mean to skip you.
That is all right, thank you. Tricia Zizambo, I'm the Director of Training and Justice Initiative, and I also brought my training manager.
And I'm Jean Fettner, formerly the Manager of ORR.
This contract is for a three-month amendment to our current contract, so that we have a little bit of extra time as we finalize our transition of bringing our DSP training curriculum in-house from Easter Seals Mork. We have been working diligently on this since we became fully staffed in May, so I will say, because we weren't staffed for a few months, we found ourselves needing these three months' transition time. So, we have had to custom-build all the training from scratch. Not all from scratch, I should say. We had some help from our friends in Macomb. And then this three-month will allow us to have a transition period, soft-launching with some providers, working out any of those bugs that come up, so that we can go launch on January 1st.
Great. So, this is just a contract for three months into the fiscal year, and that's a reduction, you know, we were looking at pretty consistently, almost $1.3 million a year. There are costs associated with the program, so it's not a dollar-for-dollar savings, but this is, will still be significant, and we control the training message.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, which is very important.
Yep, the 307, that's a quarter of what their regular contract would be.
Exactly. So, is there any questions or comments anybody has? Yes, Mr. Young.
You mentioned working with Macomb. Was that kind of frequent, or was that just kind of connected with the, with the training?
We work with our partner PIHP all the time, but this is a real significant partnership that we've been doing with Macomb, with the DSP. I'm gonna let Jean talk a little bit about it, but it really surrounds our medication administration's training. It's one of the harder modules in the DSP curriculum, and we're partnering to share some staffing. So, in a way, they will pay us to use some of our nurses that we've hired, and they've shared their curriculum with us. But I can let Jean talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, I think that one of the most essential things that happened with this contract is that our partners in Macomb offered to assist us with the content of these classes that we are providing. We're actually doing a foundation shift in how training is presented. It's going from an old modular-based process to a guidelines-based process, which is gonna bring it fast-forward into the future. And so, it's gonna give our staff and our providers a lot more flexibility. It's going to let us accommodate all of the absolutely interesting and fascinating combinations that we have, that direct support professionals do, the different things they do in people's private homes versus in specialized residential, and it's going to be incredibly flexible. And so, what Macomb offered us was to assist with the base content if we share back with them our finished product. And we think that that's a, was a very, very good thing to do, and so, we have been working in making these trainings move from a PowerPoint structure to a highly-integrated training that involves a lot of interaction with the learners with their training classes. I've been, I was given a fascinating tool called Articulate 360, followed up by Rise 360, and I am a training designer by nature, and I have been loving it. But we do need some time to field-test it. So, Macomb County's been on board. They've been piloting, I'm not, I'm sorry, not piloting, but editing content, and they've been loving what we've been doing. So, it's been great working with them.
Good, thank you both. Anyone else? If there is no further questions or comments, I entertain a motion for a recommendation of approval.
Still moved?
Support.
A motion and support. Any further discussion? There being none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
I'm, Mr.?
Oh.
Hooper, would you like to?
Yes.
Okay. He's an employee of Easter Seals Mork.
That's correct, okay. So, well, thank you. I, I'm glad we had that disclosure. We'll have to defer the item. Oh, wait a minute, we got John. Does he, does he stand in? He does not? We had a ruling, okay. Then what we'll have to do is defer this, and hopefully we'll have one, I believe we're gonna have one more member of the Finance Committee show up.
Sounds good, I'm here all night.
Pardon me?
I'm here all night.
Thank you.
You say that, you say that with a smile.
I do.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your input. So, we'll, we'll, we'll move that one off to the side and come back to it. Okay. Yeah. All right. Now I've checked off Mork with an asterisk. A check with an asterisk. Okay. All right, now we have the My Strength contract, and Suzanne Weiner is here to give us an update on this contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep, this is a contract extension. We've actually been working with My Strength, which is now Teladoc, since 2015, and it is, as it stated here, it's an online mobile application. It's got evidence-based information and tools for individuals for any behavioral health needs, a variety of behavioral health needs, as well as just wellness-type of needs. And it's a tool that we market and put it out in the community in a vast array of settings, with sending it out via email, sending it out through our newsletters, having it at health fairs and other events that we go through, our go-to. And is also a important, an important component of our accreditation process. So, we're just asking to extend that contract for another year, till, starting, it's starting September 1st through August 31st, 2024, at $30,060.
Right. Is there any questions or comments that anyone on the Board or the Committee has? There being none, then I'll entertain a motion for approval, a recommendation of approval.
Still moved?
Support.
A motion and support. Is there any further discussion? There being none, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Furman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Oh, was it me? I'm sorry, you did. Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, there we go. Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, the next item is our CNS Healthcare Anti-Stigma Contract, and Christine Burke is here to make a presentation on this item, which is $344,000 and some change. So, Christine, thank you.
That is it. So, good evening, everyone. Just some history about this contract. I try to remind people every year, but originally, I think we've had this contract in place for 16 or 17 years. It started as a pilot with CNS. It was so successful both locally and nationally, it became a line item in the CNS contract several years ago, three years ago now. This is my third time presenting it separately. When we developed our internal legal team, and we were really instructed to look at processes in our contracts to ensure more transparency for our Board regarding contracts, we were, it was recommended to us that this be removed from CNS, the CNS service, because it's a community outreach program and is not a direct service to individuals that we support in the community. It is still very successful, so for our third, three quarters in this fiscal year, there have been 133 presentations and approximately, let me get to that, 3,500 people and about 3,800 resources, materials regarding anti-stigma that have been distributed in the community. And the group, which is led by Malkaya Newman, really is instrumental in the number of work groups in helping to provide insight on the impact of stigma in their lives, and then that helps us to develop some of our marketing and outreach materials with, with a different level of sensitivity, which I think really is the true value as well.
Any questions or comments of Christine or about the contract? Yes. So, I know we split it out for transparency to show what, what it was, but the question I have is, why do we vote to approve the contract? Since it's not really a financial, it's a, it's a policy practice?
Because of the dollar amount. The contract is $344,000.
Even for, but we don't do it for other provider-side services? You know, we don't, we don't approve the contracts directly about Mork or with Easter Seal or?
I believe, I believe those are service-related, so this is not a service to people.
This is not a service?
Yeah, this is not a service, line item to people that we support. This is more community.
Okay.
It's a service to OCHN.
All right, thank you.
Does that help?
I think so. And just for full disclosure, one of our Board members, Malkaya Newman, is involved with, as a, works and makes presentations under this contract, and she's not here today, but just as with Mr. Furman on the last matter, these conflicts are expected from time to time, because we are required to have members of provider organizations on the Board. That's the way it's set up. So, when that does happen, we make disclosure, the person doesn't vote on the issue, so, or on the matter. So, just wanted to make that disclosure. Any other questions or comments? There being none, I'll entertain a motion for a recommendation of approval.
Still moved?
Support.
Any further discussion? There being none, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Furman.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last but not least, among the contracts is DeClemente Segal Design, which has been providing engineering services for the renovation of our space at the Children's Crisis Center, but they are also now assisting us with HVAC planning and design services here for renovation, in particular, of our Training Department space. So, Adam, do you wanna give us a little update on this contract?
Yes, so this will be an extension, a three-year extension to DeClemente. As you indicated, it'll be $15,000 a year, with not to exceed a total of $154,000 and some change. Yeah, we expect to continue to use them throughout the years for any space planning, their architectural service that we have. You mentioned the HVAC, that's, that's a pretty big project that'll be coming up. It's not on the agenda for this year, but we'll be planning on it for the future, and then any other space needs we would have in this building. We've talked about a few different things to help serve the community, so they would be able to assist us with that.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? There being none, there being none, then I'll entertain a motion for a recommendation of approval.
Still moved?
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? There being none, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Furman.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, well, thank you very much. We got through six of the seven, and at the time that we have, possibly later on, we'll be able to have a vote if we have another member of our- possibly later on, uh, uh, we'll be able to have a, a vote if we have another member of our committee show up on the Mork training. So, that takes us now, uh, to the draft fiscal year twenty twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget. And I, I do know that at the, uh, study session, there was a very, uh, significant discussion about a lot of different issues. So I'm gonna leave it to Patrick to fill in what's, uh, changed or been modified since that time and, and give us the final, final. So thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Patrick, we have the, um, report for the initial budget for FY twenty-four. The first sheet, um, you're looking at shows. It shows the, um, fund source summary. Uh, breaks down the fund source summary, um, gives us the various fund sources that we receive and all funding includes Medicaid, General Fund, Grants, and CCBHC. The Medicaid, uh, this summary page shows a total of our FY twenty-four initial budget. It breaks it down into the various categories. The first one being Medicaid, it gives us a Medicaid surplus based on all of our funding for Medicaid. We're showing a fu- uh, Medicaid surplus of eight point eight million four hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars for our overall Medicaid, um, surplus. And then also the second item is the other mental health items. That includes, um, the budgeted revenue for, um, General Fund, local grants, non-CCBH, non-MDHH services. And it also includes, um, our overall budget amount and surplus amount in that category is three point eight, three million eight hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. That category I wanna come back to later to explain, uh, why is it different than the overall, the other mental health services versus the Medicaid. The third category is other substance use disorder, um, which is a surplus of two point nine, um, overall two million nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars for a total overall budget surplus of fifteen million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine. So when we look at the budget overall, we're looking at a fifteen, um, million, roughly fifteen million dollars overall revenue net surplus. This number includes the total surplus of all funds, uh, all fund sources, all expenditures, uh, the net effect combined. And so that's what's included in, in that number, um, is all of our fund sources, the net effect combined. When I talked about the middle section, which is the other mental health services, um, if you look at the grade areas of our totals, it shows eight point four million, um, for overall Medicaid in the very top section. And then it shows, um, overall Medicaid, overall other mental health services of three point eight. The reason why the three point eight number is used is because of fund source allocation. And we can't have a, a deficit in our GF. So we're showing how we're covering it in that middle section. And that's why it's reduced to three point three versus the three point eight number. Overall, this is a conservative, um, report. It's based on revenues and expenditures are based on, uh, projected conservatively. We wanna use a conservative approach because, you know, accounting standards cost are conservative. And we don't wanna be projected, um, too aggressively, but we wanna use a conservative approach. And based on all of our financial, um, uh, analy- analyzation of the budget, we've, uh, concluded that we're presenting a fifteen million dollar, um, fifteen million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand overall revenue net surplus budget. Some of the, um, items included in our, in our budget includes the Medicaid surplus, which is eight point four, and that Medicaid surplus will be used to pay down our ISF. Um, the reason, you know, you can utilize Medicaid, uh, it goes towards, uh, the ISF, which will cover our FY twenty-three. And then also, um, the second category, the three point three, uh, surplus in other mental health services, it's, can be applied toward unrestricted. And then the third, uh, surplus area is S U D, which includes July Grant Prevention, SOAR, uh, which is, um, and then Treatment and Access. And then it also includes, uh, the PA two funding. And so our overall budget, again, like we mentioned, is one, fifteen million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine overall net assets. Uh, that's our surplus. And so, um, the next, uh, screen, if we wanna go to the next page of this presentation, it shows the, um, detail report of how, um, so the next page shows a detailed report of lump sum totals. It included our, it includes the mental health and S U D services combined. And so it kinda breaks out, um, what we initially, um, talked about on our summary page. It gives you a breakdown of what's included in the Medicaid funding and how it breaks out, uh, with Medicaid, um, and other revenue sources. It gives us the general fund amount as well as the local dollars. And the reason why it may not match dollar to dollar in our general fund and our local is because, um, some of the other revenue is captured in the other, um, section. Because we, we receive other funds, for example, from the, um, income from investments. And we also receive miscellaneous funds as well as Resource and Crisis Center, uh, local revenue. And that goes, um, it's broken out into Medicaid portion and then it's broken up in the local portion and then it's broken out into other. But when you add it together, that it comes up to the, uh, ten million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eleven that we mentioned as our total overall, uh, general fund, um, budget that we presented earlier for approval. The local portion, it, um, it breaks it down by Oakland County, um, the nine million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight. And then during the other section, there's a hundred thousand dollar allowable revenue from local, which is added to that total as well as, um, the Resource and Crisis Center, uh, revenue, as we mentioned. And that helps to make up our total, um, local budget. So overall, this budget is, um, being presented because, um, and I'm proud to mention that our admin remain within six percent. Even with all of the, um, additional things that we're doing with admin, we still managed to keep our ad- administration budget, um, s- under seven percent, which is roughly around six point eight percent. We're happy to, you know, make that announcement. And so tenant income also is a part of, um, our general fund. I mentioned it, ten point, ten million, eight hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars was the state portion. And then the other, um, thirteen thousand of that general fund dollars, uh, came from the tenant income and is part of our administration. We receive tenants' income from the persons that, the tenants that occupy space in this building. And because of that, we have to report it in a separate category. So overall, um, this is the budget that we're presenting. It shows the total, um, overall expenses. Overall revenue was four hundred and ninety-nine million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-one, um, against total expenses of four hundred and eighty-four million, three hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and twenty-two. And for net change in that amount of fifteen million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine. And so that's the dollar amount that we're presenting tonight. Our overall total administration, like I mentioned, fell below the, um, seven percent, which was around six point eight. And that included with the total programs and other expenses brought us to our total for tonight. And that's my presentation. Um, if you have any questions, uh, feel free to ask. I hope I try to answer them the best of my ability.
Patrick, first of all, thank you and to your team. Uh, it takes a lot of work to put together a half, uh, half, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stumble over these words, a half a billion dollar budget, uh, and I know this is your, your first time steering the boat on that totally. So we appreciate, uh, all of your effort and in particular, your staff getting us to this point today.
Thank you.
So thank you. Does anyone have at this time any questions, uh, for Patrick or any member of the team relative to the budget? Yes, Mr. Young?
Sorry, um, allergy season. I love this time here. Um, Patrick, can you kind of remind the group on the, um, Medicaid with the redetermination? You took a, a very conservative approach, but can you just share what you guys did with that?
Well, based on the, uh, analytics, I believe it was twenty-one percent reduction that we based our, uh, calculations off of. So, um, the rate that we had, we took a twenty-one percent reduction over the course of the year to come up with, uh, methodology that we used for this, uh, budget.
Which I think is smart and healthy because it, and talking with folks that are going through it, um, I know all the things that are out there in the media, but, but the families I know are not getting two months notice. In some cases, it's days. And it's a scramble to get it in. So, um, I think there's, hopefully the state is gonna be kind. But on the other hand, it's, if you're not paying attention to whatever means of contact they have for you, and in some cases, it's only a cell phone number, it, you know, so far it seems to be on the recipient as opposed to the state to help out. So I think we're wise with the twenty-one percent and I, I hope we're better than that and I hope the state supports. But I, I think this is pretty amazing that you not only balanced the budget, but gave us some moving forward given all that. So thanks.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or comment? Um, I have just one and that is that, um, first of all, I'm glad to see we're gonna enhance the, the fund balance, uh, a tad. Uh, you know, we've tried to get out as many dollars as possible. So I think it looks like it's about three percent, which is, which is good. Uh, we kinda live a hand-to-mouth existence, uh, here on a year-to-year basis. But I think the most telling, uh, matter is what you mentioned about the overhead costs. So we're seeing in excess of ninety-three percent of the dollars we are entrusted with are going to the providers and for services. So I think any nonprofit that can say ninety-three percent, uh, over ninety-three percent of the money is going to the people who need it, I think is a great accomplishment in and of itself, not to mention all the other items that are in this budget that will help, uh, those, uh, who are in need of our services. So, um, I think that's a constant battle. It's the board's job to be the stewards of those dollars and to keep the spending, um, to a, a moderate amount that, where we can provide the services, but still administrate them properly. And cost, part of our administration, I think everyone needs to know, is that we have a number of federal and state guidelines and audits and compliance, which we'll talk about a little bit later. Very significant that we as, uh, the agency, the pass-through agency for the funds, we're the ones responsible for that compliance. So that means not only compliance by us, but also by our providers. So, uh, that's quite a task. And if we didn't have that, uh, cost, we could put up, put out even more money. But we're required by law to make sure that compliance is in place and that, uh, there's a cost to that. But nevertheless, to have over ninety-three percent of the funds going to those in need, I think for any organization is quite an accomplishment. So, uh, collectively, uh, to, to our staff, thank you very much for doing that. We appreciate it. Any other discussion? Okay, there being none, uh, we will now take this budget, uh, for consideration of, uh, recommendation of approval to the full board at our meeting next week. Motion? Yeah. Motion and support. I'm sorry.
Um, moves recommend, I recommend that we take it to the full board next week.
Support?
Uh, motion and support. Is there any further discussion? All those, if, if there being none, then we'll have a roll call vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries again. Thank you very much. And we'll see you next Tuesday for the final, final, final. Unless somebody gives us new numbers, you know. All right. Thank you, Patrick.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Um, I believe Mr. Um, Hooper would like to talk regarding the training contract.
What's that? So what's the update? Right, right. That's what I'm assuming. So we'll just wait till, uh, we get another member of the Finance Team here. So at this point, let's get some clarification, 'cause we only have two members of the Policy Committee here, so they can't vote. Are both, are both these items that Policy has, the annual plan and compliance, are those both voting items or?
The annual plan is. The board did review this at the study session. So, um, and we did a, hold a community forum regarding the, um, annual plan. So if you want, we can defer that to just the board meeting because they already met with the board, we reviewed it with the board.
Right.
And we reviewed it with the community. So I would defer to, look, this, this board on what they wanna do with the annual plan.
If the rest of the board feels comfortable, I.
But the, um, Policy Management has more than the Finance Committee. So it doesn't constitute.
So we need, we need one, we need. Okay. So I, then that, I'm the, is it me, the, the Chair John or the Chair Dennis could vote?
Chair's him.
The Chair.
But you still wouldn't have a quorum.
Okay. So we can, we can, but we can also, we could act to defer that as a, as a.
Yeah, you can defer it to the board meeting.
As a full, as a full committee, we could ask to defer that. And I think if we've, if, if, if people were satisfied with the discussion at the study session and there was also public engagement, then the board can decide not to act on it at the meeting or they can act on it. So is that acceptable? Um, I think the staff has spent a lot of time preparing for it. And I would defer to the staff if they'd like to present on the policy items tonight or wait to have the items presented, uh, or brought up during, you know, for motion approval at the board meeting. And you may have to ask, answer a whole bunch of questions. This might allow you to not have to answer as many questions, but no guarantees. So it's your call. You guys have done a lot of work. I appreciate it. I think those that are here tonight. I think those that are here tonight appreciate it. So, is your call to present or not?
What you changed is they'll just defer to the board meeting, but it's your call if you want to present tonight.
Um, thank you for that consideration. I, I am, uh, I don't really feel strongly either way because we already discussed, uh, the details of the bulk of the plan, um, at the study session, so there will be some changes, uh, in the final version, but, uh, not very many, so, um, I, I don't really feel strongly either way.
All right. Then one of the things you might want to think about at next Tuesday's call, or at next Tuesday's meeting is to identify what were some of the changes from the study session. Highlighted, just like I asked, what were the new and, what were the highlights for this year over last year? They'll probably want to know what are the differences from study session to, to this.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Well, then unless there's, uh, if someone has a burning passion to, to hold this up, then we'll just, uh, we, I don't think we have to, do we have to have a vote on, on this for the?
You don't have a quorum?
Do we just defer, just consider it to be deferred to the board meeting for consideration?
So, the annual plan is a votable, is a action item, but the compliance report is not.
Okay.
So, you can listen to the compliance report.
Okay. That's fine. Then let's defer, then, then, uh, the ruling of the chair will be that we defer the fiscal year twenty-four annual plan to our meeting next Tuesday. If there's no objection, then we'll proceed that way. I hear no objection, then we will move on to the compliance update. Uh, and I'm sorry, Yvette, you are the co-chair, right? I don't mean to, I am sorry, I did not mean to overtake your, uh, jurisdiction. So, you can go ahead now with the rest of the compliance, the policy management and I, I apologize. I was just trying to get some clarification.
I understand.
Okay. So, go ahead. It is your, it is your show for the, uh, compliance update.
Ms. Massey, you can proceed.
Hello again. Marquita Massey, the Director of Quality and Regulatory Compliance. So, I am here tonight to speak to you about, uh, compliance activity for quarters two and three and fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, first off, I want to make a point. In your board communication packet, there was an error on the summary sheet. This, the, this topic was mistitled. A template was used from a previous, uh, presentation and was not updated. Thank you, Mr. Lanson, for pointing that out. So, uh, what I'm gonna speak about today is, uh, as I mentioned, quarters two and three activity for, uh, compliance. Um, we report to, uh, the state's OIG department four times a year. Uh, we report in February, February fifteenth for activity that ended the, uh, first quarter of the fiscal year, so that would be October one through December. For the second quarter, we, uh, report on, uh, May fifteenth. And for the third quarter, we report on August fifteenth. And then for the final quarter in the fiscal year, we report on, on November fifteenth. So, what I'm gonna be speaking to you tonight about is, um, activity from January one through June the thirtieth. So, in our contract with the state, it says that we have to have a program integrity program. Uh, there's a federal regulation that we have to comply with. There are required elements that are, uh, must be present in an effective program, uh, corporate, uh, compliance policy or code of ethics policies are examples. You have to have a compliance committee and a compliance officer. Uh, staff training is required annually. Uh, we have a reporting hotline and, uh, that is a, a resource that anybody can use to, uh, report any types of concerns pertaining to compliance. We also have a form on our website that is open to the public for persons to, uh, submit any area of concern. Um, if you were to go there, you would just follow that path that's listed on the bottom of this slide and you would be able to see that. Um, our processes for non-retaliation is outlined in our policy. Uh, any incident that is reported to OCHN is investigated. Uh, it doesn't, uh, there, there is no, uh, wrong door to report any, uh, issue or concern to. Uh, sometimes issues come to us by way of, uh, customer services, uh, recipient rights, so it, it doesn't really matter. We don't, uh, filter that out and require that information only come to us in one format. And then, um, as a result of an investigation, appropriate disciplinary actions must be taken. This, uh, next slide here is, uh, just a screenshot of the reporting form that's available on our website. Uh, as I mentioned, it's for, um, it's for the public, it's for providers. Any interested and concerned stakeholder can use this to report. Once this is completed, it goes directly to, um, the email box of our compliance committee. This next slide. I think we may be a little out of order here, but, um, move on to that. Okay. Um, more about how we meet requirements. Uh, I mentioned that we have a corporate compliance policy. That policy can be accessed through Policy Stat. It's a very comprehensive policy that covers details on our compliance program and activity. Um, when an issue is reported, an investigation is opened and assigned to staff to review. Um, this may involve conducting, uh, interviews, um, review of records and, um, a, an sample of an entire population of clinical records would be, uh, reviewed in terms of completing an audit. We, um, also have a requirement for annual staff training to be completed. That's also required for, that's required for our staff here and also for staff in the network. Um, in terms of reporting and information sources, I mentioned that we have a reporting form on our website. Uh, internally here at OCHN, we have a reporting form on our internet. We also have, uh, contract language that outlines the requirements for, uh, reporting incidents to OCHN. And we also have, uh, a multitude of reports that, uh, we can run to, uh, help us in our compliance efforts. Here, uh, we have a quarterly compliance meeting that, uh, occurs, um, every quarter. Members on that committee include all of our executive leadership, uh, myself and the directors of rights, uh, human resources and our security officer. At that committee, we review cases that have been, uh, presented and, uh, researched and audited during the quarter. Um, also, uh, we obtain consultation on, uh, cases and, um, we also deliberate over issues. Of course, if there, um, as a result of findings from a review, there, um, often is a need for corrective action plans for, uh, the provider to complete. And then, uh, we also, as I mentioned, we are required to report quarterly to, uh, the O and OIG on any issues that pertain to, um, improper use of Medicaid funds. Can you move to the next slide, please? So, on this slide, uh, there is a summary of the types of compliance issues that have been, uh, reported through quarter three of fiscal year twenty-three. This, uh, graph shows categories of all the, uh, issues that have been reported. You can see from the graph, the highest category of where we've had issues reported pertains to, um, overpayments or improper billing. So, examples of that would be, um, when there's overlapping services. So, if a person is in an inpatient setting, they also couldn't be in a, uh, residential setting and billing for that. So, we have reports that we monitor monthly that help us to identify those, uh, types of issues. Um, another example that would be categorized as an overpayment would be billing for services that were not actually provided. From the graph, you can see that the second highest category pertains to HIPAA privacy. Uh, examples of the kind of issues that fall into that category would be, um, any improper disclosure of protected health information. So, examples would be, uh, unencrypted emails, uh, misdirected emails, uh, emails with, uh, PHI and, uh, subject line, which would be an improper disclosure. And also, uh, mail that, that this doesn't happen as often as, uh, did previously because up, the majority of communications happen, uh, through email. But there are still some instances of, uh, actual, uh, US post office mailing where the, there may have been an error where, um, a mailing was misdirected. In, uh, terms of HIPAA security, um, examples of issues that have fallen into that quarter category would be phishing attempts. So, uh, external entities trying to gain access, uh, to our OCHN information. So, our staff here are trained, uh, to recognize phishing attempts. Our, uh, IT staff, uh, has conducted trainings on this. Uh, we have an incentivized program where staffs that recognize an attempt as a phishing attempt and report that to IT, they are, uh, eligible to be entered into a monthly drawing to, um, win a gift card. So, I think our staff are doing a really good job about, uh, self-reporting phishing attempts so that, uh, OCHN is not negatively impacted. So, I am gonna stop here to ask if there are any questions so far.
Lanson?
Thank you. Marquita, I always love the reporting that you do. I know it gets into the weeds. Um, one of the areas that you brought up, I, I think it's great that we're reporting on compliance. Doesn't sound like we've had too many issues. I mean, under forty, that's pretty good. Um, but I saw hotline and I wondered, did we have that many calls that were hotline? And do we know of any of those issues that people reported that were substantiated?
Uh, these issues that you see here were substantiated.
Okay, but did these come in through the hotline?
Uh, we don't get a large volume of referrals through our hotline. Uh, it's there, we talk about it, uh, but primarily, uh, phone calls, uh, internal staff reporting, uh, provider staff sending an email. Uh, primarily that's where we get the bulk of our referrals from.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, we can move on to the next slide. So, this slide is just a summary of activity from quarters two and quarters three of, um, reporting that we had to submit to the OIG. And as I mentioned, the OIG is primarily, primarily interested in the misuse of, uh, Medicaid funds. So, other types of compliance activity that we have here, that have been reported here at OCHN, we investigate and determine if action is needed, but, uh, this is not, uh, reportable to the OIG. So, examples of that would be, like, the privacy issues that come up. Those are issues that we still have to address and implement corrective action plan as needed, but that's not something that we report to the OIG. So, for, uh, quarters two and three, um, there were three different categories, um, on which we reported to, uh, the OIG. First category pertains to tips and grievances. So, our reporting sources for those issues that were reported to us came from our internal OCHN staff and provider staff. And then we also got a couple of referrals from persons served. So, uh, that's a good thing because it lets us know that people served, recognize when there's an issue or a concern and they need to report that. So, uh, description, high-level description of these issues that occurred were, uh, we had an instance of, um, a service being billed after death. That was an error by, an oversight by the staff that still required corrective action and for the staff to provide an explanation and to be trained appropriately. Um, we had instances of staff billing for more services than provided. Uh, that pertained to professional staff and non-professional staff. In this, uh, world of post-COVID and, uh, virtual, uh, reviews, we had, uh, some instances of where staff, uh, shorted sessions that they reported. And, uh, that was reported by persons served as a concern, so of course, when that happened, we had to, um, do an investigation. We had a couple of instances of that. And, uh, we also had an instance of a service being provided, uh, by an individual, uh, under a lapse license. So, that, uh, was also reported to us, uh, by an individual, uh, served and we had to investigate that. So, um, in terms of actions taken, of course, the improper claims were voided, uh, corrective action plans were required and staff were terminated. In terms of data mining, uh, data mining basically is, um, a process where, uh, you are implementing, uh, reports and, um, oversight mechanisms post-payment. So, our, uh, data mining activities are completed monthly. Um, for quarters two and three, we didn't have any activity. Uh, um, activity seemed to really pick up in the fourth quarter, so when I'm presenting to you next time, I'll, we'll have, uh, some volume in this category. In terms of audits, we had, uh, audits reported, uh, referred to us by the OIG where, uh, we had to investigate. So, OIG gets their information to, uh, send referrals to PIHPs through, uh, the forms that are available on their website. So, anybody can report, uh, an allegation or a concern they have with compliance. At the OIG level, they don't filter through to determine if, um, any, uh, allegation appears to have any, uh, merit on the surface. They, uh, typically just pass it on through to the PIHPs to investigate. So, examples of issues that we had that were reported here in this, uh, category from the OIG, we had some self-directed services that were billed that were not provided. We had, um, allegations of unqualified staff providing services. And, um, we also had, uh, a couple of instances of former disgruntled staff, uh, submitting complaints to the OIG. So, I'm gonna pause here again to find out if there are any questions before I move on.
Any questions?
Okay. Okay. We'll move on to the next slide. So, um, here on this slide, um, I wanna just talk a little bit about prevention controls that, um, we've implemented and that we have here at OCHN. In our EMR, Odin, we have, uh, controls where practitioners can only bill for services based on their credentials that they hold. We have, uh, controls on, uh, time overlaps. All services have to have a start and stop time and staff can't bill for, uh, services in Odin for overlapping, uh, times. For, uh, providers that are off Odin, uh, an alert is received. Um, it's a type of error message when, uh, an attempt is made to, uh, submit, uh, claims for overlapping, uh, uh, times. And then, um, we also have, uh, some controls over uses of certain CPT codes that require, uh, two signatures. If two signatures aren't avail, aren't on a, um, document that's being processed for, uh, payment, then the, uh, claim is rejected. In terms of provider and staff education, of course, we have annual training of staff. Um, and if we have instances of staff that are, may have had repeated instances of, uh, for example, HIPAA, HIPAA privacy errors, we've required, um, additional training for those staff. Um, we also provide situational training based on the issues that have been, um, investigated. So, we would discuss those type of issues at provider meetings, um, and. So we would discuss those types of issues at provider meetings and have a dialogue with those providers just to let them know what we're seeing here so that they can implement practices locally at their places as well. Additionally, some of the other things that we have is we have training verification audits, and we also have our retrospective claim reviews that are Medicaid Services verification claims audits that are done annually. We can move to the next slide, please. I want to provide some additional information on actions that have been taken in response to compliance issues. In terms of training, I mentioned that we often require additional coaching and counseling pertaining to staff pertaining to the protection of PHI. We've implemented additional verification checks of documentation prior to billing. We've increased the volume of our billing verification checks. We contract out to a vendor for our billing verification checks. The department requires that we do this annually. By us contracting out for this service, we were able to expand the population of claims audited. So for fiscal year 23, we audited for our vendor for the time period of October 1st through March 31st of 2023, our population included over 108,000 claims, which equal to over 21 million in claims paid to 26 different vendors. We focused on ABA services and telemedicine services for this audit. That resulted in 29 different audits being done. Our ABA services, which is our autism provider, applied behavioral analysis is what that acronym stands for, it accounted for over 10,000 claims and $4 million in claims that were paid to 22 vendors. And the telemedicine services accounted for 98,000 claims, or 17 million in claims paid to seven vendors. So from this, a sample was selected of 500 claims and 1,400 claim lines. There were some findings from the Medicaid claims verification audit, and there were recruitment efforts. There are recruitment efforts that are currently in place with the impacted providers. I'm going to pause here again to find out if there are any questions. Okay, I want to talk briefly about some new proposed requirements from the state that is being included in our contract for fiscal year 24. So the proposed language from the state goes beyond listing the, and requiring what the regulations actually require. So it goes beyond what the actual what is and what the desired outcome is, and it's going more into the how. So it is requiring more language that pertains to how we go about doing our day-to-day jobs. This language is currently being negotiated, so it's not finalized yet. But the intent by the department is to ensure that our PIHP contract languages for OIG and program integrity monitoring mirrors that of the Medicaid health plans. So the difference is with the Medicaid health plans, you know, they're bigger, they're for profit, they have a different level of staffing that we have here at the PIHPs. So what this language is really mandating is essentially unfunded mandates. They're requiring information such as specifics on staff training, how the compliance team interacts with legal and human resources, procedures for performing an investigation, getting really down into the nitty-gritty and the day-to-day activities that we have to do. They are mandating in this contract language the establishment of a regulatory compliance committee and a special investigations unit. They're looking for periodic evaluations of the compliance program, which can be done either internally or through external sources. And also a submission of provider enrollment agreements to the OIG. So those are just a few examples of the kind of activities that are being included in the contract for fiscal year 24. But as I mentioned, we're, these things are still under negotiation. The hope is that we can come to a happy medium and kind of get to the point where we're being allowed to do what we have been doing while still meeting the regulatory compliance requirements, but not having the state dictate down to the detail level on what has to happen here at the local level on a day-to-day basis. So are there any questions that I can answer?
Ms. Newman?
Do you know if there were an extraordinary number of complaints or issues that came out of each PIHP for them to change the contract language the way that they did?
I don't believe so. I, the NDHHS OIG department, it's relatively new, maybe about four, five years old. I think they are really overstepping their boundaries in terms of what they are requiring us to do. In my communications with other PIHPs, they're, no one has voiced any like increase in cases being reported. And everybody is pretty much of the same mind that they're really overstepping their boundaries and really taking it to the extreme. I mean, to do what they're actually requiring would require more staff, and it's unreasonable.
I have another question. Before you talked about, I'm sorry, come back to me. I forgot what I was going to say.
Ms. Newman may also address that, your first question as well. So Ms. Massey and I, along with a number of the other compliance officers throughout the state, have met in a negotiating, as a negotiating team to make recommended changes to the new language that will be in the contract. As she refers to, the language is beyond what we find in the regulations that apply to compliance programs or that prescribe the specific terms of how a compliance program should be structured. So with respect to certain PIHPs, the issue is that they do not have resources that are adequate to support that. With respect to other PIHPs, it is the case that they may have resources, but they have chosen to use them in different ways or to deploy them in different ways. And as Ms. Massey has said, in order to actually comply with the new language, additional people would be able to, would be required to be hired because there is actually a group of people or a person at the very least that would not report to the compliance officer but would be required to do special investigations. So there are a number of things that have changed. What we speculate is that this is, this change is more predicated on making our contracts, similar to the health plan contracts. But it is not necessarily the case that, that the things that have been asked for are the things that are, if you will, best practices or essential given where we are or how things have been reported over the last five years, so.
I remembered my other question. Going back to the number of complaints that were verified, or I can't remember what we call that, but are those agencies part of the core agencies or the new providers?
Uh, it's a combination of both. So core providers and also residential providers, the ABA providers, all different provider types.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Are there other questions we can answer? Okay, well, if there are no other questions, that concludes our report.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes our, the Policy Committee, okay, portion of the meeting. We now go to other business. If Suzanne wants to give us an update on September events and outreach?
Hello again. Just wanted to give you an update on some of the items that are listed for outreach for September and October. September always is a very busy month. It's a great month of a lot of fun activities. Last week, we had the annual plan community forum. Also wanted to mention that last week Dana participated in a panel highlighting justice initiatives at the Tri-County Summit. You have an article in your packet regarding that Tri-County Summit for your reference. As you can see, a few farmers markets events, also the state recovery celebration was held over the weekend. And we also have two of our biggest events that we participate in. The Walkham Mall Rally is going to be in Lansing on Wednesday on the 13th. So we'll be at the Capitol steps with a thousand or so of our friends that will be advocating and walking and really just celebrating advocacy and anti-stigma efforts. Also, one next slide, please. We also have the NAMI Walk that's coming up this week. It's going to be on Saturday. NAMI Walk is going to be held in Detroit. It's held on the Wayne State Campus. This is the second year that it'll be held at the Wayne State Campus. And it's actually a very nice venue for the walk, so really looking forward to that this weekend. I also wanted to mention a couple of other items that are coming up this week is Dana along with Kyle Blaskow, who is our Crisis and Access Director, is going to be presenting at the Pontiac City Council tomorrow evening regarding our access service specifically focusing on youth and families. And Dana is also presenting at a mental health community forum that is being hosted at the HOC, and that's going to be on Thursday evening. So quite a few events, keeping Dana very busy out there in the community. Wanted to mention next week, we have our annual recovery celebration, going to be hosted here both outside, we have outside activities as well as some inside activities, so looking forward to that next week. As well as the week after, we will be hosting the Oakland County Suicide Prevention Task Force is going to be holding their suicide prevention event here at OCHN. I also just wanted to give you a quick update about our proclamations. We, I presented the Suicide Prevention Month as well as the Recovery Month proclamations. We've received approximately eight of those proclamations back. Some of them have been acceptance in person, so that's starting to pick up a little bit in terms of those proclamations and receiving those back. Next slide, please. Also wanted to update you a little bit on some of the press releases that we have going out, obviously recognition of Suicide Prevention Month, so that press release went out. Just sent out a media advisory for the Walkham Mall Rally. We'll also be sending an updated press release about the rally after it happens. And also the threat assessment training that was held last week highlighting that information. Just wanted to mention the usage of our facility. As I mentioned before, the Suicide Prevention Community Forum is going to be held here at the end of the month. And then I'm going to bring Tricia up, and she's going to talk about our co-responder initiative and give you a quick update. Does anybody have any questions for me about our community outreach? Great, I'll turn it over to Tricia.
Thank you. We just wanted to take a moment during this outreach to highlight that with our co-responder efforts, we've just recently been approved with the Board of Commissioners and the Oakland County Sheriff's Office for a three-year contract. And we just really wanted to highlight that to show that we have been doing yearly contracts with our law enforcement providers, and we've now gotten to the point in this initiative where we're planning out long-term, and they're seeing that benefit that they want to enter into those longer contracts. And so Christine said it would be good to mention this. But we're also continuing to pursue this effort, find more funding, find more communities. And so I'm eager to keep coming back and updating you on this, but we thought moving to that three-year was huge, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. May.
So you're working with the Oakland County Sheriff's. Do you need approval from specific, because the Oakland County Sheriff's Office is all over, there's one in Highland, there's one.
Yep, there's 12 substations.
Yeah. Do you have to, are you working with all 12 of those substations, or is it just specific ones?
We would love to work with all 12. So we are working with leadership at Oakland County Sheriff's Office. I think I've had Captain Hill and other law enforcement people here before. Right now, our co-responder is in Pontiac. If I could give him 11 more, he would take them. We're also working with our other 42 law enforcement agencies as well.
Is it just waiting for like permission from those specific offices to like sweep in?
A lot of it's funding. A lot of them, it's something very new in their organization. For example, I have four communities coming to our next core meeting with our current coresponders for them to hear it from other chiefs and other coresponders and other law enforcement agencies that are doing it. So a lot of that is partnership building, capacity building, and then also the funding. So a lot of this is not in their budget. The law enforcement budget starts in July, so it's a little bit different than, of course, our fiscal year. So working on many different facets of that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Torres?
And my question was, were we expanding to any new communities? But I think you kind of answered.
I hope so.
Yeah.
We, I'm not going to put those communities out there in case it doesn't work out, but we've been working with multiple communities, along with our Board of Commissioners, to try to increase funding, looking for grant opportunities. But we have a list of about eight or nine different communities that we've reached out to. Some we've talked to about the partnerships, like we do with Auburn Hills, Birmingham, Bloomfield, and Rochester, if that would work for them. Some communities are large enough where we'd have, like we do in Troy or in Pontiac, where we have one co-responder for the community, so.
And then were you guys still, I know you were, they came and presented a few months ago, I believe it was, and the data was, they were talking about collecting it, and that's kind of one of the more difficult parts. So are we collecting data on it with contacts and all that kind of stuff?
Absolutely.
Okay. And can we get updates on that at some point?
I would love to.
Yeah, it'd be good to see, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions on events or updates? Don't go away. We're bringing your item back. It's got an asterisk on it.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Suzanne. So.
Thank you.
Before we get to public comment, Mr. Torres, just to update you, and we're glad you're here, because we need another finance committee member. But so we're able to vote as a finance committee on the Mark Training Contract.
Okay.
Which we did go over. I know you've looked at it, but we do need to vote on that, and we can't, we didn't have a quorum because Mr. Furman works for Mark and has to recuse himself. So with your being here, we can vote on that for an approval. Is that, is that right with you?
Yeah, I'm prepared to vote on it, yep.
Okay, all right. Well, then, I don't think we had a motion, we had a defer.
That's how we got snagged. So I move to recommend to the full board next week.
And I'll support. And I'll support. Is there any further discussion? There being none, roll call vote, please?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Thank you. The finance committee business is complete, and Trish, you are released. He said you would stay all night. Great, great, perfect, okay. That now brings us to the public comment portion. Do we have anyone online or otherwise phone? No? All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would wish to address our, our committee or board this evening? There being no one, we'll move on now to board member comments, and I'll start with Adam.
Sure. Again, I'd just like to thank all the staff and teams that put together the presentations tonight, Patrick's team, Marquita's team, and also Suzanne and Trisha, thank you. We're really appreciative of the work that you all put in. Thanks, have a good night.
Mr. Young?
I would echo Adam's comments.
Okay. Okay?
No comments.
Mr. Torres?
No comment.
Yeah, I'll echo Adam's comments, and I was glad we, we had a lot of work tonight, and I wanna thank all the members, board members for their diligence. We had a lot of contracts and a lot of work. Oh, go ahead. Mr. Lance, but I am so sorry. I did have me to.
That's okay. Just two things. Just a reminder to board members, if you have not yet registered to attend or decided to attend the Michigan Community Mental Health Association's Fall Conference, please reach out to Sheila. Yes?
I have two more numbers to present, so I think there's only one more.
So, and then the second thing is, if people hadn't checked their calendar, today is September 11th. It's the 22nd anniversary of the hijackings of, and the Downing of four jets, two into the World Trade Center, one into the Pentagon, and one into Shanksville, PA. Some of us, new people in some of those buildings that passed, others that passed after, and I just wanted, just to bring that up and say that as a comment tonight. Never forget.
Thank, thank you for bringing that up, and I think, you know, watching some programs the last couple of days, and especially today, there are still families who are attempting to heal. There's still health issues, there's mental health issues that are being dealt with by, hopefully being dealt with by Congress, so we can have some closure. But it's a day that we'll never forget, and it's one of those days you never forget where you were when you heard the first crash, or maybe the second crash. So thank you very much. And again, I wanna thank the staff for all their work, especially on the budget. If there's no one else, then at this point, we will stand adjourned. We do have a 6:30 executive committee meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah, did you have any board comment? Did you have any comment? No? Okay, all right. Right, yeah. And then we do have a 6:30 executive committee meeting, so we got a few minutes to take care of that. Thank you and have a good evening. I always save the chairman for last, you know, the real chairman.